Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the role.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burghardt.
Here.
Mike Clements.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Ian Kilberg.
Here.
Craig Malodra.
Here.
Richard Marks.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Jim Rodecki is out. Robert Swanson.
Here.
Just to elucidate, Alderman Rodecki corresponded with us earlier that he would not be present this evening, so indeed, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask our firefighter or paramedic Samantha Prang to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, ladies and gentlemen, item 3A, to be exact, is the administration of the oath of office for firefighter/paramedic Samantha Prang, who just led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Firefighter Prang, may I invite you to come to the podium? Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, folks, I'm going to read some information here that firefighter/paramedic Prang provided the chief, and I trust that all of you will, like I did earlier reading it, will find this to be extraordinary on many levels. And since you wrote it, it must be extraordinary.
Well, my sister's the writer, not me.
Did your sister write this?
No, but she did look it over.
You had this edited before you submitted it?
Well, she's a journalist for the-
This is your twin sister in New York?
Yeah, she writes for the Wall Street Journal. How do you not have her look it over?
Is that a paper? Is that? Is she watching this thing probably?
Yep.
Oh, good. Edited by your sister?
Mm-hmm, and mom, of course.
And mom.
Yep.
Way to go, mom. Grew up in Carroll Stream.
I did, yes.
Do you know how Carroll Stream got its name?
I do not.
Does anyone?
Yeah.
I went to Bartlett.
How did Carroll Stream get its name?
Jay Stream's daughter.
Jay Stream's daughter was Carol.
Oh.
Amazing?
I didn't know that.
There's a school called Jay Stream and Carroll Stream.
Please, no outbursts, ma'am, thank you. That was Samantha's mother, everyone.
She did not-
Don't- Graduated Bartlett High School. This is your writing, so I'm sharing information that you feel comfortable sharing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Graduated Bartlett High School in 2010.
Mm-hmm.
Upon graduation, I enlisted in the United States Army, where I served for four years on active duty, which included one deployment to Kandahar, Afghanistan, from 2012 to 2013.
Yes.
During my time overseas, I received a battlefield promotion to sergeant. Check this out. Making me one of the youngest sergeants in the unit at the tender age, I added "tender", of 20.
Yep.
May I call you Samantha?
Mm-hmm, Sam, Samantha.
Which do you prefer?
Samantha's good.
Samantha. So Samantha, you're 20 years old, and you're a sergeant.
Mm-hmm.
You're obviously a long ways away from home.
Yes, just a little bit.
Share with us what that must be like.
I tell people now I would go back.
Really?
Yes. It's such a different experience, the relationships you build. I was very fortunate, I wasn't out on the front lines every day. I stayed, I had a very big base that I was on. It was a NATO base, so I got to meet a lot of British and Ukraine and people from all over the world, which was really cool, but I had a lot of amenities, and I called home almost every day, so I was very fortunate.
Wow.
Yeah. In fact, when I found out I was going to get promoted, my first sergeant made me call my mom and put her on speaker and told her before I knew, so, yes, it's kind of-
So, the woman who had the outburst earlier?
Yes.
Your mom knew that you were being promoted before you did?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
It was really cool.
Man. You left the military in 2014.
Mm-hmm.
Started school at the College of DePage and received your associate's degree in fire science.
Yes.
Did you always know you wanted to go into this profession?
No, it was actually when I was deployed, which is where I started to get interested in it. I was the only female in my platoon, which can be hard sometimes.
How big was the platoon?
We were small, we were like 12.
Okay.
But we had a lot of big, we were a big company of, when we deployed, I was responsible for 220 soldiers. Yes. So, we were very small, but, you know, it's hard to be around guys all the time, sometimes you need a break. So, I would go down to the battalion aid station with all the medics, and they happened to be all women, and they started teaching me different things, and I started to find that I had a passion for it, and as I did more research, I found out that, you know, you've kind of got to be both a firefighter and a paramedic, and I found that very intriguing and interesting, and I just dove right in as soon as I moved back home and finished my contract, and haven't stopped since.
That's incredible. In addition, I received my paramedic training at Good Sam Hospital in beautiful Downers Grove.
Yes.
And is that Level 1 trauma center?
Yes, it is.
So, you see it all.
Mm-hmm, it was a very good experience. Not everyone got to do their hospital time at Good Sam, they kind of put us all over, but I was fortunate that I got to be at a Level 1 trauma center, so.
That's amazing. I attended the Romiaville Fire Academy where I received my BOF, which is?
Your firefighter certificate.
Board of Fire.
Basic Operations-
Basic Operations something or other. Certification. And finished in the top two in my class.
Just missed it.
Now, of course, a natural question would be, how many people were in the class?
There were 12.
And don't tell me three, okay?
No, no, no.
Wow. You were also awarded the Leadership Award.
Yes, I was.
We've had other firefighters welcomed here who also received that award.
Yes.
What is that award all about?
Basically, they feel that you are a strong leader in the group. I was the only female. They put me as a sergeant of arms, which you're responsible for running, you know, kind of keeping everyone in line, and that was something I was used to coming from the military, which I know they kind of look for that before you start, but we became one of, like, the top classes up to that point. They kept telling us, but it just, I knew how to lead, I knew how to keep things organized and keep things running, and it's just what I do.
Wow, this is who you are?
Yes.
And whose trait did you inherit in that regard?
I think both my parents, but maybe a little bit more from my mom.
Got it.
Yeah.
Good answer. I've worked in the fire service for about a year and a half, which included time as a firefighter/paramedic with the Hanover Park Fire Department.
Yes.
You're currently in your, now, check this out, you're currently in your fifth season as a girls' basketball coach at Bartlett High School.
Yes.
And you played at Bartlett High School?
I did, yes.
Freshman and sophomore year.
Freshman and sophomore, I didn't try out my varsity years.
Now, may I ask, did you have similar height at that age?
Yes, I've been about six feet for a while.
No kidding?
Yes.
And why did you not continue your basketball career?
Well, I kind of had a moment where, you know, I was very unsure of myself, you know, in high school, as a lot of people can be, and I didn't think I would play a lot, so on the inside, I was like, well, what's the point of going and practicing six days a week if you're going to ride the bench? But looking at it now, I wish I played, and I knew I would have played.
Sure.
Yeah, would have played plenty.
You know, I had that same experience on the equestrian team.
Really?
No, no.
[laughing].
In my spare time, I enjoy spending time with my rescue dog, Mia.
Yes, she's from Puerto Rico.
Mia is from Puerto Rico?
Yep.
Okay, explain this.
Well, you know, I was scrolling through Facebook one day, and this picture popped up of these 12-week-old chug puppies, which is a mix between a chihuahua and a pug, and I had always wanted a dog, and I could never have one growing up, it's a lot of responsibility, they're expensive, and so one of the things that my parents had kind of agreed when I moved back home was that I could get a dog, and she would be mine, my responsibility, and we found just this random picture on Facebook one day, and I sent it to my mom, and she's like, "We have to get this dog, she's adorable." And about a month later, we picked her up at O'Hare, and we've had her ever since.
So, if I understand this correctly, you graduated high school, joined the Army, natural-born leader, youngest sergeant in the history of that particular discipline, but you weren't mature enough to have a dog?
No, not before that. The Army helped a lot.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Wow.
Teachers your responsibility.
Now, a couple of the aldermen will be surprised to hear this, and perhaps even disappointed, but it says here that you are a huge Chicago Cubs fan.
I am.
Why?
My grandma is a huge Cubs fan, she has been my entire life.
Sweet.
My mom has been, and so I kind of took after them, although my dad and brother are big White Sox fans, so.
There.
They're house-divided.
A house-divided.
Yes.
Yeah, my goodness. You like to go to games when your schedule permits.
Yes.
Hmm. Your twin sister lives in New York, which we now learn, writes for the Wall Street Journal.
She does, pretty cool.
Which section does she write in?
She is a breaking news reporter.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So, we could see a headline tomorrow about you.
We could. [laughing].
You have been to New York?
Mm-hmm.
And you have been to multiple Broadway shows?
Yes, one in particular that I enjoy very much.
Oh, wait a minute, you've gone to this show multiple times?
Yes.
What do you think, should we guess? The city attorney guesses Hamilton.
No, I haven't seen Hamilton yet. I know, it's on my list, it's on my list.
All dogs go to heaven?
No. It's wicked.
Oh.
Terrific production.
Yes, I've seen it 39 times.
Whoa, come on.
Yes.
Seriously?
Yeah, it's, I had a slight obsession in high school.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yeah.
You've seen Wicked 39 times in New York City?
No, I've seen it three times in New York, about 25 in Chicago, I've seen it in California, Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, yeah.
Don't we test for things like this?
[laughing]. Yeah. It was big when I was in high school, because I was here for a long time, and my mom would call me out of school on Wednesdays in the winter, and I would go downtown and do, they had a ticket drawing for $25 tickets, and Wednesday matinees in the winter were very lucky for me, and so that's how I saw it.
Now, you use the plural, Wednesdays.
Yes.
Every Wednesday, mom?
No, no, but a handful of times, yeah.
Do you work Wednesdays here, just out of curiosity?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. 39 times?
Yes, I just saw it in October for the 15th anniversary.
In Chicago?
In New York.
Oh, yeah.
It's much easier now that my sister lives there, it's cheaper.
Twin sister?
Yes.
Who's older?
She is by a minute, but she cut in front. Yes.
And is there video to?
No. We were born really early, and my sister kind of got in the way, which caused us to be born early, but the whole pregnancy, I was labeled "Twin A," I was supposed to be first, and she cut. So, she's a minute older.
Wow.
But I got the first kiss from our mom, so that matters more.
You do?
Yeah.
You have a younger brother who's a junior at Loris College in beautiful Dubuque, Iowa.
Yes, he plays baseball.
He does?
He's a left-handed pitcher.
Really?
Yes, very good bat.
Does he have a similar height that you do?
Yeah, he finally outgrew me, he's like two or three inches taller.
That's good size for a-
It is.
Especially a southpaw.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is he your favorite brother?
Well, he's my only brother.
Okay, got it.
So.
Just after seeing a play 39 times, I want to make sure you're-
Yes, he has gone a couple of times, so, he did drag him with me.
What motivates you every day to do what you do?
I've always had a passion, I guess, for helping people, but in high school, I really had this aha moment, my senior year, where I didn't know what I wanted to do, I had no idea what college I wanted to go to, and my sister knew exactly where she wanted to go, what she wanted to do, and I just felt very lost. And we had two alumni from Bartlett High School pass away, one my junior year, one my senior year, and my senior year, the funeral procession went by the school, and the teachers were allowed to take their classes out, you know, to just show your respect and stuff, and as you can imagine, you've got, you know, teenagers of all ages outside in the middle of a school day, so everyone's goofing off and being loud and obnoxious, well, when the procession came by, everyone stopped and was just silent, and I remember walking back in, and that's when I was like, okay, I want to do the military, and I just have, I've always had that drive, and I struggled, I wanted to leave the military because I'm very home-oriented, I love my family very much, and that was the biggest struggle for me, was homesickness, but I knew I wanted to keep serving, and this was a way to kind of serve my community and get to experience everything, so.
That's pretty cool, isn't it, Alderman Marks? You know that firsthand?
Yes.
Alderman Marks has a son who's a captain.
Oh, very nice.
Yeah. He has seen the play, no, he has seen it at least once.
I'm a little weird, it's okay.
He's seen it at least once?
I wait a long time without seeing it, though, don't get me wrong.
Well, it really doesn't really matter what you say now, because we know that 39 times, Wicked-
It's an obsession, it's okay.
Clearly.
It is, yeah.
Any questions or comments from the dais for firefighter/paramedic Prang? Prang, excuse me? Alderman?
Yeah, you mentioned, obviously, you've been not afraid to go into male-dominated fields, so, you know, if there are any teenage girls at home watching or hearing your story, what would you tell them if they're interested in taking a path?
Well, I actually have some that have already come up to me through coaching. I have one that's trying to enlist in the military now, and her recruiter's not being the most forthcoming, and she kind of wants a female perspective, so I've been talking with her and mentoring her, and I have a lot of, a lot of the girls are always just asking my opinion, "How can I do better? Why do you want to do this? You know, I don't know what to do in life," and, you know, I just tell them that that's normal, it's okay, and you've got to be tough, and if they want to go into this field or the military or become a police officer, you just, you have to understand that it is a male-dominated field, and that's okay, you can change that, so.
Great, well, I'm really glad you're joining us here in Geneva, and I love Wicked, too, so.
Thank you.
I don't think it's weird at all.
I didn't say it was weird, I think it's notable.
It is notable, yes.
Thanks for sharing it with us, thanks.
No problem.
Anyone else in the dais? You have some family with you?
I do.
Tonight, would you like to introduce those who are joining you?
Yes, well, I have some family and friends, I have my mom, my dad couldn't be here, so I have my aunt and my uncle, who are also my godparents, and then I have a big church family here, very, yes, so we have Mrs. Casco, Mrs. Bouchard, and Mrs. Shelton, and Larry, our musical director.
Wow.
Yeah, who also lives in Geneva.
Where's Larry, in the, oh, there he is. Are we going to sing the oath?
No.
Now, you were humble when introducing your aunt.
Yes.
Your aunt is also an alderwoman?
Yes.
From Rolling Meadows?
Yes.
We're delighted to have you here.
It's pretty cool. [inaudible]
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Mr. Clerk, are you ready?
I'm always ready.
You invite whomever you'd like to join you, and we will administer the oath.
Okay.
Okay?
[inaudible]
Oh.
Whichever you prefer.
Getting out of the shot. All right, am I live? Everybody hear me? I hope so, all right. Before we start, I just want to give a shout-out to our paramedics in Geneva Fire Department. I met a bunch of them about two and a half months ago when I hurt my back, and crawled in the house and lay on the floor screaming for my wife in some incredible pain, no idea what was going on. My wife called 911, and we lived two blocks from the fire station, and it took no time at all, and as my wife described it, our living room was full of paramedics, and these guys were great, they figured out, you know, assessed the situation, started an IV, gave me the good stuff, so they can move me, and what I remember most from that was their competence and their efficiency and how caring they were, and they reassured my wife and made us both feel a lot better. So, it's a real privilege tonight to give you the oath. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Samantha Prang.
I, Samantha Prang.
Having been appointed to the position of firefighter/paramedic.
Having been appointed to the position of firefighter/paramedic.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of King, aforesaid.
County of King.
Aforesaid.
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of firefighter/paramedic.
The duties of the position of firefighter/paramedic.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Chief, I'm just going to make a brief mention that you referenced earlier, for those of you who might not know, firefighter/paramedic Prang is the, well, let me rephrase this. She's a full-time firefighter/paramedic, and as all of you know, we have had multiple women firefighters paid on call, paramedics elsewhere, and others, excuse me. This is the first time in 25 years Geneva has hired a full-time female firefighter/paramedic. So, with respect to trailblazing, with respect to your extraordinary skills and talent, and the fact that, with respect to Alderman Burghardt's question, I think, we welcome you.
Thank you.
And we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen. We're proud to welcome our officials from the Mental Health Board on their annual report and presentation. Welcome, Madam Chairman.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Burns and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Suzy Shogren, and I serve as the Chairperson of the Geneva 708 Mental Health Board, which is comprised of individuals who have a sincere and passionate regard for Geneva residents who need services for developmental disabilities, mental health, or substance abuse and addiction needs. Professionally, the members of this board either have worked or are currently working in the medical, business, and education fields. Collectively, their professional skills and expertise provide for an insightful and informed ability for each member to discuss, make decisions, and carry out the responsibilities relative to the people the 708 Mental Health Board was created to serve. I am very proud to introduce to you the six other members of the Geneva Mental Health Board. They are Connie Wagner, Vice Chairperson Eleanor Hamilton, who is not here this evening because she has another board meeting, Christine Kouts, Jean Gaines, Rick Gabriel, and Carrie Holman. We would like to once again thank many of the city's employees, especially City Administrator Stephanie Dawkins, who was prompt in sharing her knowledge and guidance to questions we have regarding municipal procedure. Jean Fornari, who is our communication liaison and provides answers to administrative questions, and we would also like to thank Peter Collins and Kevin Starr, who have provided technology and communication support. Recently, our board has reflectively considered and discussed how best to communicate with the city council and our community, the invaluable ways funds directed for the Mental Health Board are utilized. We believe that the best way to do that is to share some anecdotal stories collected from our community's service providers. We have provided each of you a copy of these stories and have chosen a few to share now. So, the first one is from the Association of Individual Development.
The AID South Street Group Home and Longview Apartment setting are both located in Geneva, and both are supported in part by the generous contributions from the Geneva Community Health Board. Charlie, David, Ryan, Chuck, and Chris live at Bethany, and they say they feel like a big family, they take care of each other. Greg, Vic, Hayden, Willie, Zach, Richard, and Jeremy live at Longview, some as roommates and some in their own apartments, and they are enjoying learning to live more independently. All the residents are very active in the Geneva community, Special Olympics, Fox Valley Special Rec, and the Geneva Park District. Several volunteer in the community, one is employed 20 hours a week, and another is actively seeking a job. They get together to celebrate birthdays, attend holiday parties, parades, fireworks, Cougar Games, and other community activities. In December, they plan to meet at the Buffalo Wild Wings at the Geneva Commons for the Bears-Packers game, I don't know who they're voting or cheering on, but they're going to see a movie and watch the light show at Mooseheart. All the AID Geneva residents' lives have improved due to their participation in the AID residential programs. They have become self-advocates, they have learned daily living skills, honed their social skills, increased their understanding and use of technology, several have learned to use smartphones, learned to use public transportation to increase independence, improved their health and nutrition literacy, and helped to manage their own finances. It's a real win situation.
And we'd like to also share a letter from Eckerd Center for Mental Health, Mrs. Christine Kouts.
Hello, the name is withheld, the patient's name or the client's name, but it is written by the client, you can see some really tender, well-meant writing here, so I will begin. My name is, "My treatment at Eckerd Health, Eckerd Center for Mental Health has been life-changing. I have had treatment with David Hughes for multiple sessions, and I can say without a doubt that my life has changed for the better. I came to David suffering from a long-term disability. I have been burdened from my disability for eight years. With David's help, I was able to face my problems head-on. Not only did I face the problems, but with David Hughes' help, I'm almost 100% symptom-free." Exclamation point. "I go days with no symptoms. The days that I do experience problems, the symptoms are very brief and are seldom or few. David Hughes has helped me gain new insight on life, and I can't thank him enough. The work done at Eckerd Center is life-changing. Thanks to David Hughes and to Eckerd Center for the awesome treatment that I have received. Thank you."
And finally, we have a story from Lazarus House, and Rick Gaines, or Rick Gabriel, rather, is going to share that.
Richard had been living with his parents in Geneva prior to coming to the doors of Lazarus House. His parents asked him to move from their residence. Lazarus House has since been able to not only provide a place for Richard to live, but also one in which to help him work towards stability in his life. Richard has struggled with depression, which has caused challenges in his life. Richard has struggled with depression, which has caused challenges in his life. His case manager in the emergency shelter assisted him in getting connected with a mental health services provider in the area. Richard had also worked a seasonal job previously, but with the help of the employment coordinator at Lazarus House, he obtained local part-time employment. He was connected with services through the Rens Center in Elgin for support with substance abuse issues. Richard then applied for the Center for Transitional Living at Lazarus House and moved into that program shortly thereafter. In this program, he is now working with his case manager weekly to move forward toward goals that will help him gain independence. He is currently working toward improving his employment to enable him to save money. It is great to see the stability that Richard has gained through his connections with services here at Lazarus House and in the community.
We believe these stories and the additional ones given to each of you from the other organizations reflect the impact the funds given from Geneva have on delivering the various services that many in our community need. Just a few weeks ago, the board engaged in the discernment and allocation process of the grant applicant's requests. We are confident that Geneva residents in need of mental health, developmental disability, or substance abuse, addiction needs are successfully supported. Finally, we would like to reiterate that mental health needs in our society are varied and often complicated. The National Alliance on Mental Illness, who provided services to over 400 Geneva residents in the last fiscal year and already assisted almost 300 since July of 2018, shared a sentiment often expressed in families... Family Support Group. Quote, "We are shocked to learn that we're not alone. There's something powerful about sitting around a table, sharing a horrific experience related to a loved one's journey, living with a mental illness condition, and having everyone nodding their heads in agreement because they've all been there. In group, voices which at first were so tentative grow stronger because they are with people who completely understand and are able to suspend all judgment," end quote. Thankfully, Geneva does not overlook the present-day need, nor the importance of financially supporting the many agencies who are readily and competently available to at-risk community members. Our board is privileged to be a small part in making sure there are available solutions for residents in need. We will continue to carry out our mission statement goals of funding, education, and advocacy, as well as to continue to talk about and being instrumental in ending the stigma associated with mental illness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the dais for either our chairman or any member of the board? Alderman Clements.
Thank you for the presentation, and yeah, extremely important work. I appreciate what you do, and this... I very much am bored with what you guys do, and, you know, I've had some members of my family that have struggled with a lot of issues. I know how difficult mental illness can be, the stigma associated with it. It's so easy to identify a physical ailment. We don't really treat illnesses of the mind the same way that we need to. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You got a list of great organizations that you've vetted. If someone wanted to contribute to the Mental Health Board, where would they go to donate?
Well, it's... Yeah. The Mental Health Board funds are collected from property tax dollars.
Oh, the... Well, there's a donate button on the page here through...
That...
You still make a gift specific?
That...
Yeah, you can still specifically donate towards the Mental Health Board.
Right.
But all the funds do come from the city, primarily from property taxes.
Property tax, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for asking the question. We don't mind additional funds.
There's a donate button there for a reason.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Who was that full-time firefighter 25 years ago?
Last name was Shields.
Was it really? Wasn't Sue Lencioni?
No. I believe Ms. Lencioni was a POC, full-time. I... First name I don't recall, but last name was Shields.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll send you a note to confirm that.
(laughing).
Good use of point of order.
Very good use. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and they can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Bruno makes the second. Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item five passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills total?
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read the individual items that add up to that amount can be found on the city website in tonight's City Council packet.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Maladra. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bills for payment passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 11, committee of the whole items of business have all been captured under the consent. Item 12A, under Presentations, Ordinances, Petitions, Resolutions, and Bit Awards, is Consider Resolution Number 2018-118, authorizing the move of the building located at 122 East State Street to 822 East Side Drive. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Marx. Questions or comments regarding the move or anything related thereto? Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. What is the date that is being looked at for this move? I wasn't sure. I saw it in the packet. And about what time of day are they thinking? And how long?
We do have the mover extraordinary, and of course, our... Welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you. And yourselves?
Good.
Good. I'm Robert Hallidem, structural relocation contractor, Blount, Wisconsin. We're looking at sometime in the second week of January right now. The foundation isn't quite ready where it has to go, and the lot is postage stamp size, so all that prep work has to be done before the house can come there. And because we're coming out on a state highway, Springfield's involved in setting up this permit, and they will call all the shots on how this works. They're not going to give us any permits around the holidays. So, someplace around the week of the 8th is where we're gonna start talking about doing this. It isn't solidified yet, but it will be solidified probably in the next couple of weeks.
Is it fair to assume the move takes place during daylight hours?
It will be done on a Tuesday.
Oh, no kidding?
Springfield likes Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursday mornings, 9:00 a.m. They don't allow night times at all. No Mondays, no Fridays, no next to a holiday.
Interesting.
And so how long do you anticipate the move taking once it starts?
I'm thinking it's gonna take a half an hour, maybe. Let's say an hour on the outside. I'm never able to answer that question hard because I'm not the person that moves the obstructions, i.e. the wires.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part?
The wires. I'm not the person that moves the wires, so I'm always at the mercy of the utility companies moving wires or any other obstructions in the way.
Oh, I see.
My... People laugh at me when I say this, but my straight answer for that is always, I can do it in about 15 minutes if there's no obstructions. But there are obstructions. I don't control them completely. The professionals that do that are really good at it. We usually do very well. But we're looking at, I'm gonna say 30, 60 minutes.
When you say utility wires, you're talking about like street hanging wires?
Everything drags across the road. It's in the way.
And do you anticipate there being anything? I can't think of something crossing like 38 or East Side Drive.
There's one set of wires on 38 about halfway between Chrissy and East Side Drive. About halfway between, there's a set that runs across there. And then there's overhead light mats at East Side, but I'm able to maneuver through those. And there are some other wires up on East Side.
And is... Are the roads going to be closed in both directions while the home is moved?
They will be while this is going on. Well, 38 won't. 38 will have three... The two eastbound lanes and one of the westbound lanes closed as we're moving. Traffic will be able to come along... Eastbound traffic, I should say, will be able to come along behind us and move at our speed. You will see the police moving traffic westbound in the single lane. The Illinois State Patrol will be running this operation from start to finish. They... Regardless of whether we start on a state road or not, we always see them run the entire route, whatever it is. And of course, the local police are gonna be involved in that too, as well as the fire departments.
Okay, thank you for that information.
You're quite welcome.
Anyone else at the dais? Alderman Burkhart.
Just curious, how many of these do you do in a year, or have you moved in your lifetime career?
I lost track after 100.
After over 100?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no idea. Hundreds.
I went to a presentation at Geneva History Museum a couple of years ago about houses that had been moved around Geneva, and they have all these crowds standing to watch them, so...
The further back in time you go, the more of this you see. It's kind of fallen out of vogue. We tend to smash everything and bury it anymore. I don't just move. We do a tremendous amount of lifting for underside work, steel plate repair, basements repaired, no basement, put one in, flood elevation changes, that sort of thing.
Is there anything?
I don't do too many anymore. I'm 65, and I did three last year. I did four this year. I have three lined up for next year, and that's all I want. Some young guys need to come and do this. I used to have six or seven on wheels all the time.
Wow.
I've been at this for over 40 years.
Very good. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Alderman Kilburg.
Could you just comment on the structural integrity of it? I mean, there's been a lot of disassembling of that home, and it's been there for a long time, and it seems as though, from just examining from the exterior, that it's in somewhat of a state of deterioration.
This is one of the first things I look at when I go look at a structure. And of course, there's been a tremendous number of pieces cut away from it. There were additions put onto it later, some of them decent buildings when they were built, some of them very poor. Most of them deteriorated because the roof was let go on them and in bad shape, which is why they've been cut away. What we have left is the original building, which is 179 years old now, and it's in very good condition. It's all mortise and tenon-assembled building, like the old barns we see where they notch and peg things together, all hand-hewn, and it's in real good shape. Fortunately, the foundation was built up out of the ground, so the water never got to it. When you walk around looking at the underside of it, it's very solid. As you know, we picked it up and moved it up the end of the block and so on. It sits there nice as pie. We really haven't any trouble with it. Most of these condition factors are things that I can determine in advance when I look through them, and I did that. I bid this job back in 2015, and I looked at it then and decided, yes, it can go, and this is what can go and that's what can't.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. We do have a motion.
Thank you.
We do have a second.
Appreciate it.
Voice vote sufficient, Mr. City Attorney? Voice vote was sufficient, folks? All those in favor of I, please... Excuse me, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12B, ladies and gentlemen. Item 12B is to consider Resolution Number 2018-119, authorizing change order number two for 200... For 2014 through 2018 brush and leaf collection services with Kramer Tree Care Specialists Incorporated to increase the contract amount not to exceed $1,971,112.50. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McGowan, seconded by Marx. Just for clarification, folks, this matter is with respect to the brush pickup. So we're discussing brush pickup tonight. Questions or comments regarding the brush? Seeing none? Alderman McGowan?
Oh, my microphone is already in. Yes, I just wanted to state the fact that I've noticed in the fourth ward where I live and I represent, there are many, many large branches still laying about on the parkways that came down in the recent storm. So, I really feel that it's important for the city to take care of those. There are some places where there was a fire hydrant with large branches nearby, and I really feel like as a safety matter, the city should work to quickly get those brushes moved out... Branches, pardon me, moved out of the way. Some of them are quite large and heavy. So, I just feel that this is an important brush pickup for the city to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clements, then. Alderman Kilburg.
Yeah, I agree. We have a lot of stuff to pick up. And along the lines of things laying around, I wanted to thank Director Babica. There was a gigantic tree that fell and obstructed a stop sign on Western and Fargo and was interfering with the crossing for school kids, too, and I asked about that, and it was taken care of very quickly, so thank you very much for doing that. But now there are gigantic pieces of tree that need to be picked up, so thank you.
Alderman Kilburg.
If it's appropriate, I guess my question would be, we're allocating funds for eight days. What if the project requires additional time? What's the strategy as it relates to the city to address additional pickups? We're gonna be starting, I understand, on the east side because we have leaf collection going on on the west side yet. Let's say... And there is a lot of limbs down, and I think a lot of limbs are starting to appear at the streets. I know in my neighborhood, there's a lot of limbs that moved to the street over the weekend. Do you feel that eight days is sufficient to get all the limbs collected around Geneva? And if not, what is the strategy to address additional limbs that would need to be collected, weather permitting?
So, the proposal that we got from Kramer was a not-to-exceed amount, so they surveyed the area to see what needed to be done. That equates to about eight days of work, but if it takes more than that, it's a not-to-exceed contract. So there... The burden's on them.
So, in other words...
People pay no more than $19,484 for this brush pickup. Now, that's also... I'll say that with a caveat. It's incumbent upon residents to put their brush to the curb on... Is it Monday, the 10th? Director Babica?
Yes, I guess that would be an additional question.
Because if people keep batting brush...
Are they gonna be starting tomorrow?
No.
If this is approved?
No. They're scheduled to start the week of Monday, November... Uh, November. Monday, December 10th. I didn't know if there was another question there. I'm sorry.
No, but I mean, again, so everybody would need to have their brush to the curb.
Well, again, that the storm-related brush. This is not a full-blown brush cleanup, and we want to stress that to everybody, too. This is not an opportunity to go out there and trim your hedges because you didn't get to it before Thanksgiving. This is to remove the storm damage that was a result of the blizzard that went through the area on Sunday and Monday of last week. We encourage everybody to get the brush out to the curbs as efficiently as possible. Do not put the brush on top of your leaves. If you put your brush on top of the leaves, your leaves run the risk of not being collected. And as with every comment that I make this time of year, this is all weather permitting. Weather conditions do look favorable for next week. We're in the low 30s, rising into mid 30s, but there is rain and snow in the forecast for Thursday and Friday of next week. But as we all know, anybody's guess for the next 24 hours, you're really... I wouldn't plan an outside wedding this time of year, that's for sure.
So, in essence, then, this contract then would... This would apply until the entire city's been cleaned?
Correct. It'll be one pass through the city. One pass.
Right. So, in other words, if, for instance, weather would not permit, then this would extend into 2019?
Or until they complete. Collecting brush is a little bit different than leaves. They can collect brush throughout the winter time, as long as the brush doesn't get buried under snowdrifts or things of that nature. So they will keep working at it as long as weather conditions are favorable to complete the job.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais for Director Babica or City Administrator Dawkins? We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Clerk, when you are ready, please take the roll call.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item 12B passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at new business and public comment. Any public comment this evening, ladies and gentlemen? Any new business from the dais? We hope you all enjoyed Illinois's 200th birthday today. A lot of excitement here in the room. Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone, this upcoming weekend is spectacular event of Christmas Walk. Come downtown and see lots of awesome stuff and enjoy Geneva at its finest.
And the theme this year is Leaves and Brush. Is there a motion to adjourn, ladies and gentlemen? Motion by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Clements. All in favor of adjourned this meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned, folks.